Okay, we're going to call this special meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors to order, and if you'll please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to take a minute now, we're going to adjourn into executive session just for a few moments, and we'll be right back and continue the meeting.[123.11]
Okay, we're back and we'll reconvene the meeting. Today, we're here to discuss and for possible action regarding the severance and transfer of certain water rights and a pertinent, it's told you, to land located within Planet Ranch legislation, related agreements or documents, and authorize the board to take steps deemed to be in Mojave County's best interest. And to that end, we have invited people from all the entities that are involved in this agreement, and we have people from Freeport-Mack Moran here, and we have some supervisors, welcome supervisors Erwin and Claperton from La Paz, and some of our people, and on our deus up here, we have our lawyer, Carlos Ronstadt, who will be asking questions and giving us advice when we need it. So today, first, we're going to start off by having a presentation by Frances McAllister from Freeport-Mack Moran. Mr. McAllister is the Vice President of Land and Water. And, oh, I can't even see you behind there. Come on up, and if you're ready to go.
Sure. Madam Chair and members of the County Board of Supervisors, thank you for inviting us to be here with you today. Before I start, I see the plaque here, so I'm going to go ahead, even though Chair Angus mentioned my name and title, I'll go ahead and spell it out if that's okay. Okay. My name is Frances McAllister. That's F-R-A-N-C-I-S-M-C-A-L-L-I-S-T-E-R, and I work for Freeport-Mack Moran and am the Vice President of Land and Water. My address is 333 North Central Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona, 85004. And once again, I want to thank the members of the County Board of Supervisors of Mojave County for this invitation to be with you today. I do recognize there are members from the La Paz County Board here as well, and thank them for taking the time out to come and listen to this. We do have a brief presentation. Sure.
Would the La Paz Supervisors like to come up and sit here with us so you can ask questions? No? Supervisor Erwin, you sure? Okay, but when the time comes, when we're discussing, please feel free to raise your hand, and I'll call on you if you have any questions. Okay? No, that's okay.
Great.
And I should also add that Supervisor Moss is unable to be with us today, so it's just going to be us four from Mojave County.
Very good. Thank you very much. The presentation that I have is just a very short presentation, talk a little bit about who Freeport is, and after that, we'll talk a little bit about what this transaction is all about that we've been working on for the last couple of years. First of all, Freeport-Mack Moran is a company based in Phoenix, Arizona. We have, here in Arizona, we have five different mine sites, and just kind of going clockwise here, the first one is the Miami site. This is a mine and a smelter. We then have the Morenci site, which is over in our far east Arizona, and this is our largest mine, and we just completed an expansion of that mine. Just below that, on the map, we have Safford, and Safford is our newest mine. And then down to the southern part, we have Sierra Rita, which is also a copper and molybdenum mine. All of these mines are copper producers, some of them produce molybdenum as a byproduct. And then going up to the north and western part of the state there, you can see where Baghdad is located, and that's the mine that we're more focused on with regard to this discussion today. And just a couple of things about Baghdad. Right now, at Baghdad, we mine, we have a mining rate of about 240,000 tons per day. We run about 80,000 tons of that through our mill each day, and in 2013, we produced 220,000, 220 million pounds of copper and approximately 8 million pounds of molybdenum. The next slide here just kind of takes us through the location of where we're talking about. Right in the center, you see the big red splotch. That is the Baghdad Mine Complex and the land associated with the mine complex. Just to the left and a little bit above that is the Wikiup Wellfield. And then if you go travel straight down from the Wikiup Wellfield, you'll see a smaller red area, and that's the Lincoln Ranch. And then just to the left of the Lincoln Ranch, you'll see the Planet Ranch. So these are the, these are the different assets or the different locations that are involved with this transaction that we're going to talk about today. The Baghdad operation, as I mentioned previously, is a copper and molybdenum operation. As I mentioned as well, we produced about 220 million pounds of copper last year and 8 million pounds of molybdenum. The claims for this operation were actually staked back in the 1800s, and it was primarily an underground mine up until about 1945. And in 1945, they began the transition to the open-pit mining operations, and it's expanded ever since then. Right now, or as of 2012, we employ approximately 900 people directly at the operation, and then if you extrapolate that out, it has an impact of about 3,700 jobs here in the state of Arizona. If you look to the right side of the slide here, it gives a little bit of a breakdown of the economic impact to the state of Arizona. And you can see that through compensation, direct compensation to the employees through the business taxes that are paid by the company, and also through the vendor purchases, there's a direct impact on the state of about $178 million. And once again, when you extrapolate that out for the spending that our employees do, the distribution of the tax revenues, and then additional vendor purchases, the overall impact of the mine operation, the Baghdad mine operation to the state of Arizona on an annual basis is about $340 million. Take you through, on the next slide, some of the timeline that has gotten us here today on the transaction. First of all, Planet Ranch property was purchased by Scottsdale back in 1984, and the purpose for them purchasing that was essentially to bring water over to their community. And they had envisioned at the time that they would build a pipeline that would take water from the Planet Ranch and bring it all the way over into Scottsdale. They recognized a little bit later that it didn't make sense to do that, that there were other options for them to pursue for water, and so around about 2005, they began a process to divest of the Planet Ranch. Freeport did come in in 2006 and made an offer on the Planet Ranch that took several years to close, and we finally did purchase that location in 2011. It was actually on December 13, 2011. The intent of Freeport in purchasing the Planet Ranch was not to build any pipelines or move any of the water, the physical water, from Planet Ranch anywhere, but was to essentially enter into what the state terms severance transfer applications, to move not the water, but the water rights from the Planet Ranch and move them up to our Wikiup Wellfield, where we have been pumping water since the 1970s for supply to our mine. In that severance transfer process, there were several parties that raised objections with the Arizona Department of Water Resources, including Mojave County. The other parties that raised objections were the Arizona Game and Fish, and then the United States, as well as the United States on behalf of the Walupai Tribe. Freeport then engaged with several of the parties in discussion of how we can resolve the objections, and in 2012, we did reach an agreement with the Walupai Tribe on how we could pursue forward here, how we could move forward in resolving the dispute with them. We then began to engage the other parties after we reached an agreement with the Walupai Tribe to resolve the water rights, and we did recognize that we had this tight timeline, and the reason for the timeline, I'll explain on the next page, but we had only a five-year period under which we could resolve these disputes. And one of the problems that we had is that there were so many different parties that were involved in these conversations, we recognized that there was absolutely no way we were going to be able to resolve 100% of the water rights issues in the Bill Williams Basin in that five-year period. So what we began to do at that point is we began to engage the parties, and we determined what was a time-sensitive portion of this agreement and what was not time-sensitive with regard to this agreement. And then we began a process to only address the time-sensitive portions and split that out into a Phase One of this Walupai settlement, and the Phase Two, or the comprehensive portion of this Walupai settlement, has not yet been negotiated and will be negotiated into the future. Now let me step back and talk a little bit about this five-year period and why it is that we had to essentially bifurcate the process and end up in a situation where we had to have a Phase One and then a Phase Two in this settlement. The next slide talks real quick about, let me wait till it gets there, okay? The next slide talks a little bit about this, and under state law, under state statute, we are required that when you own a property that has a pertinent water rights, that you must put those water rights to use within five years, or those water rights become subject to forfeiture under state law. Since we completed the purchase of Planet Ranch on December 13, 2011, that meant that we had to put all of the water back to use by December 13, 2016, or we would be in the position where those water rights would be subject to forfeiture. That is why we found it important that we bifurcated the process here and had a Phase One and then a comprehensive settlement in order to make sure that we were able to address the water right situ and not be subject to the forfeiture under the state law. So the last section of this slide up there talks about the Phase One deals with this time-sensitive nature and make sure that we are putting these water rights back to use within that five-year period. And by doing this, it maintains the priority on the water rights, and it also protects those water rights for use by whichever parties intend to use them in the future, whether it's Freeport or whether it's the MSCP program. So this Phase One settlement, just talking a little bit about some of the commitments that have been made in this Phase One settlement. First of all, Freeport's commitments in this Phase One settlement, it looks a little bit imbalanced, but it is actually quite balanced. Freeport does commit to provide money to the Walupai Tribe for an infrastructure study. This is a million-dollar commitment that we have made to the Walupai Tribe, for them to take a look at what type of infrastructure they would even need to bring water onto their reservation. The second part of this is we did agree as well to provide them money for an Economic Development Fund, and that is, that is an amount that has not been disclosed at this point and is subject to a confidentiality agreement. In addition, Freeport has committed to transfer an MSCP portion of Planet Ranch to the Arizona Game and Fish to be managed under the MSCP program. In addition, Freeport has agreed to a cap on pumping from our existing Wikiup Wellfield, and the cap is at 10,055 acre-feet per year. And the way that number was arrived at is Freeport has not pumped in excess of 10,055 acre-feet in the, acre-feet per year in the past. And so we have capped it and to make sure that we're maintaining a status quo in the basin rather than looking to get additional water through this transaction. We've also waived some objections or future objections to, for water rights on some of the Indian Alati lands. The total amount is about 694 acre-feet, so it's not a huge amount, but it is, it is an important thing for the tribe. And we've also agreed that we will not bring any objections to the use of water that the Arizona Game and Fish plan to use for MSCP purposes on Planet Ranch. In return, the U.S. has committed that they will not, that they will waive any objections or challenges to Freeport's pumping on the Wikiup Wellfield up to that 1055. If we do exceed by any chance, or theoretically, if we exceed the 10,055, they can object to that, and we would also be subject to a penalty in the subsequent year on a one-for-one basis to reduce our pumping from that wellfield in the subsequent year below the 1055. The Walupai Tribe has also agreed to waive their objections on challenges to Freeport's water rights, including any pumping or water use at the Baghdad Mine. Just want to put up a slide real quick on the MSCP lands. What you see here on the MSCP lands, this is a picture of Planet Ranch, and you can see the yellow outline there, it's kind of light, but the yellow outline is the border of Planet Ranch. The red is the location of the MSCP lands of the multi-species program, and that is the land, the land in red is what will be transferred over to the Arizona Game and Fish for management. And one of the things that I do want to make clear is, right now, under Freeport ownership, there's no access to that land. Freeport is using it for farming, and so we do not provide, we don't allow public access to the land. And one of the things that this agreement does is it does ensure that in accordance with state law, there will continue to be access to this land by the public. So what are the benefits of this Phase One agreement? And you can break it down by the different groups here. The first benefit to Freeport is that we do get a long-term security of up to 10,055 acre-feet of water that is currently supplied to the Baghdad Mine. And we also receive waivers from the U.S. and from the Walupai Tribe on the transfer of water rights from Planet Ranch. The Walupai Tribe does receive the million dollars that I spoke about earlier, as well as the Economic Development Trust, and they also receive the waivers on the water rights from those various Alati lands that I indicated earlier. From the government perspective, whether it's county, state, or federal, there are several benefits here. The first one is the limit from Freeport on the Wikiup Wellfield pump. So this basically guarantees in the future that Freeport won't be going out there and sinking additional wells and pumping above the 10,055. And that's an important thing to recognize because we do actually have 40,000 acre-feet of water rights, a little bit more than 40,000 acre-feet of water rights in the Wikiup Wellfield. And subject to this agreement, we are forfeiting, or not forfeiting, we are not going to use any of those water rights in excess of the 10,055. Also, for the county, state, and federal governments, this will also help them meet the requirements for the MSCP program, which benefits the Arizona-Colorado River entitlements. It also, there are waivers that will be provided from Freeport and other parties on the MSCP use of the water on Planet Ranch. And as I mentioned earlier, the other benefit to the county, state, and federal plan, and basically to the public, is that there will be access to the Planet Ranch lands. And real quickly, just a couple of things that this agreement does not do. I mentioned earlier that this is only the Phase One portion of this agreement, and there will be a comprehensive phase to this agreement. So there's going to be additional negotiations going on, but there are several things that this does not do, and this doesn't mean that they will be negotiated as part of the comprehensive agreement as well. But the first thing that it doesn't do is it does not settle the claims of the Walupai Tribe to the Colorado River. So in this Phase One, there is no water that is being provided to the Walupai Tribe or allocated to the Walupai Tribe from the Colorado River. The other thing that it doesn't do is it does not transfer ownership of Planet Ranch to the federal government. As I mentioned earlier, it goes to the management of the Arizona Game and Fish rather than to the federal government. It does not give any additional lands to the Walupai Tribe or to the United States government. It does not limit any public access to the MSCP lands, which is a benefit because it is restricted right now under Freeport ownership. It does not authorize, nor does it even contemplate, any construction of a pipeline from Planet or Lincoln Ranch over to Baghdad Mine. As I mentioned earlier, this is a paper water rights transfer up to the Wikiup Wellfield. It's not actually any transfer of physical water. It does not authorize new withdrawals from the Wikiup Wellfield. In fact, it caps what we're currently withdrawing and maintains the status quo for our operations in the future. And it does not increase withdrawals or diversions of water in the Bill Williams watershed whatsoever. Just putting up, on the next slide, shows a map of where the, the same map, a little bit different map from earlier, but it shows the Bill Williams watershed here. The box that you see in the center there, once again, is the Baghdad Mine Site. The area that you see up in purple is the Wikiup Wellfield, and then you see down towards the bottom both Planet and Lincoln Ranches. With regard to this, this slide, what it's doing is it's showing the existing water entitlement, uses or the entitlements that Freeport currently has. And you can see up in the Wikiup Wellfield, as I mentioned earlier, we have greater than 40,000 acre-feet of entitlements that we could use in that area today. In addition, at Lincoln Ranch, we're pumping 2,325 acre-feet per year for irrigation of those lands, and then at Planet Ranch, there's 14,422 acre-feet of entitlements there as well. So if you add all of these up, there's quite a significant amount of water rights and entitlements that Freeport has in this region. If you go to the next slide, it talks about the post-transfer and what we're agreeing to here, and you see there's a substantial reduction in the actual water uses here in this region. We are going from that greater than 40,000 in the Wikiup Wellfield to limiting our production of water in that Wikiup Wellfield to 10,055 acre-feet, as I explained earlier. At the Lincoln Ranch, we are reducing from 2,000, approximately 2,300 acre-feet down to 1,187 acre-feet. And then over at Planet Ranch, you see a substantial reduction from there as well of about 8,800 feet, and the remaining water that would be used there, the 5,549 acre-feet, would be used for irrigation of the MSCP lands. So just summarizing that on the next slide, it takes you through where we are currently, where there's some 56,747, 748 acre-feet of water entitlements that Freeport has in the region. And after this deal is struck, you can see that drops dramatically down to 16,792 approximately acre-feet. So there's an overall reduction of entitlements here in this basin of nearly 40,000 acre-feet that would remain to the benefit of the basin. So just in a quick summary here in the status, the agreements have been negotiated at this point, the bills have been dropped in both the House and the Senate, and you can see on the slide there, it's in the House, it's H.R. 4924, and then it's the Senate, it's Senate Bill 2503. We will continue as we move through this legislative process, finalizing some of the exhibits and other parts of the agreement as the legislation moves through its political process towards the end of 2014. And the other thing that we continue to do is we are continuing to do briefings here in the state of Arizona. There are a lot of parties that are interested in this, and we continue to keep them, like yourselves at this point, informed on the legislative process. So with that, Madam Chairwoman and members of the County Board of Supervisors, if you have any questions, I'll go ahead and take them at this time.
We do have a lot of questions, and some of them have been sort of peripherally answered, but I'm going to hold off on that just for a moment, and I'm going to allow, we have Penny Pugh from Congressman Paul Gosar's office here today, and she would like to read a statement on his behalf, so I think that would be appropriate now, and then we'll have that. And I understand we have a representative from Senator Flake's office here as well?
Yes, just attending.
Just attending. Okay. And anyone else here to make any sort of statement before we get into the questions and information part? Okay.
Thanks, Chairman Angus and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning. My name is Penny Pugh, Congressman Gosar's District Director and Intergovernmental Affairs Liaison. Congressman Gosar sends his warm regards, but unfortunately, scheduling conflicts prevent him from attending this meeting in person. However, he's asked me to attend and share with you these remarks. I appreciate you all taking time out of your day to attend this important meeting and to stay informed with what's going on in your community. I hope you all found today's presentation to be helpful and that you will evaluate the legislation, related agreements, and matters at hand based on the facts. If you do that, I think you will find, as the entire Arizona delegation and I did, that the Phase One agreement is a good deal for all stakeholders. Water in our arid state is critical to our continued economic stability and is, of course, a limited resource on which there are many existing demands that need to be met. The settlement of tribal water rights claims is a priority in the state of Arizona. Protecting your water rights is also a priority of mine, and I have demonstrated this time and time again during my relatively short tenure in Congress. I consider it my duty to play a key role in passing the Water Rights Protection Act through the House of Representatives and to protect your water from federal takings by the Forest Service and BLM. On June 20, 2014, I introduced H.R. 4924, the Bill Williams Water Rights Settlement Act of 2014. The entire House delegation, which includes Representative Trent Franks, Representative Matt Salmon, Representative David Schweickert, Representative Ron Barber, Representative Raul Guralva, Representative Ed Pastore, Representative Kirsten Sinema, and Representative Ann Kirkpatrick are all original cosponsors of this bill. U.S. Senators Jeff Flake and John McCain introduced a companion bill in the Senate, which is S. 2503. Their legislation would facilitate the achievement of a fair, equitable, and final settlement of certain claims within the Bill Williams River, excuse me, watershed. Among the Walupai Tribe, the U.S. Department of the Interior, acting on behalf of itself and as trustee for the tribe, its members and Alatis, the Arizona Game and Fish Commission, and Freeport-Mack Moran. This bill is good for private property owners, good for our local economies and jobs, settles an outstanding water right settlement, and will result in a net water benefit to the basin. The agreement will provide certainty for the Baghdad Mine, which has an annual economic impact of $339.1 million to the state of Arizona, and sustains nearly 4,000 direct and indirect jobs. The Walupai Tribe benefits from this legislation by securing certain water rights and from two non-federal contributions provided by Freeport-Mack Moran for an infrastructure study fund and an economic development fund. The county and state benefit from the bill as a total reduction in water consumption through this agreement is approximately 11,000 acre-feet per year from current use and will result in an overall water use reduction from current entitlements and use in the basin of nearly 40,000 acre-feet per year. The legislation assists with meeting the requirements for MSCP, which ultimately benefits Arizona-Colorado River entitlements, including those in Mojave and La Paz Counties. In addition, there is a provision in the bill which allows for public access to Planet Ranch. Currently, there is no public access, and to gain entry, one technically has to trespass on private property. Furthermore, the local counties benefit from the good paying jobs and tax revenue associated with continued use of the mine. There are a couple of things which the agreement does not do, which I would like to reemphasize. The agreement does not transfer any ownership of Planet Ranch to the federal government. The agreement does not give any new land to the tribe or federal government. The agreement does not authorize new withdrawals from the Wikiup Wellfield. Once again, this legislation is good for private property owners, good for our local economies and jobs, settles an outstanding water right settlement, and will result in an overall net water use reduction in the basin of nearly 40,000 acre-feet per year. I consider it a privilege to represent Mojave County, as well as the other six counties in my district, and please rest assured that I have always had your best interest at stake. If you all have questions or would like additional information on this legislation, please do not hesitate to contact me or my staff. May God bless America and the great state of Arizona. Paul A. Gosar, D.D.S., Member of Congress. And we've also prepared, and I believe each of you have a copy, if there's anyone in the audience that would like it, we did prepare a fact sheet as well that answers three specific questions. So if there's anyone that didn't receive one or would like one after the meeting, I have some copies, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, if Mr. McAllister will come on back. First, I want to thank you. Nobody here understands that Mr. McAllister took time out of his vacation to fly back here to Arizona, so I thank for this meeting, and I thank you for that, and thank you for the presentation. I want to just, to start with, kind of point out an obvious, and that is, when you first started your presentation, on the timeline, it says that between 2006, 2011, I don't really know which date it was, that objections were filed by Mojave County, Arizona Game and Fish, and U.S. on behalf of the Walupai Tribe and federal agencies. And then when you went on, you talked about all the agreements that you had come with them, but why wasn't Mojave County ever notified of these things?
The, and the process for the objections is handled by Arizona Department of Water Resources, and from our perspective, we did not work with them on the objections. That's a process that they control whatsoever, and so what we did is we consulted with our in-house and our external counsel to determine what parties were the ones who have brought objections in that actually would affect this Phase One settlement. And as we went through that process, we identified the United States Government, the Walupai Tribe, and several others that had objections that would affect the outcome of this Phase One settlement, but we did not feel One settlement, but we did not feel, from our own internal perspective, that the objections brought forward by the Mojave County Board would be necessarily something that needed to be addressed in the Phase One settlement.
The Phase One settlement, you say, is because there's a time issue?
Yes.
And that time issue, the deadline is 2016. We're just in the middle of 2014. So what is the huge rush?
What's the issue? With regard to the water rights, you have to demonstrate by that date that you've put all of the water rights back into beneficial use. And that takes time, because you have to remember that Planet Ranch has not been irrigated for quite some time. And so our problem here right now is, Freeport is kind of running two parallel paths right now, because we didn't know how the outcome was gonna happen. We didn't know if we were ever gonna be able to achieve a 2016 settlement. So we are putting the lands back into irrigation right now as we speak, and that takes time, because you have to build the infrastructure, you've gotta get the irrigation going. And so as we move forward here, the time-sensitive nature is, it's gonna take us another year and a half to put the lands back under irrigation. And so if this settlement doesn't go through, if the legislation is stopped, or whatever might happen if the parties don't come to full agreement, then we still have to be putting that, those lands back into irrigation. So the time-sensitive portion here, and we still do have some time till December 2016, but the problem is, is the amount of money that Freeport continues to invest to put the lands back into irrigation. Not sure if that answered your question. If you want me to continue talking, let me know.
Does anybody else have a question on that part, about the timeline? But you're obviously aware that Mojave County had filed an objection?
Yes, we are, yes.
And you just didn't see it necessary for Freeport to?
Well, I wouldn't say it was necessary. I would say simply that upon reviewing that internally with our own lawyers, it did not appear that the objection was something that needed to be addressed in the time-sensitive portion of the agreement.
Does anyone from La Paz have questions about the timeline?
Good morning. Thank you for inviting us to this meeting. My name's Holly Erwin. I'm one of the supervisors representing La Paz County. I would like to ask the Mojave Board of Supervisors, how were you notified in the first place in order to object to the filing?
You have to put on the mic.
My name's Carlos Franstapp, and I'm a Phoenix attorney who represents Mojave County. And I, you know, from my perspective, I mean, we knew the objection was out there. They had another firm representing them, and that firm made calls to everybody, including DWR, and said, you know, "What are you guys doing on this objection?" And they just said, "Oh, nothing's going on." And on June 4th, all of a sudden, we got a letter from DWR saying that our objections were denied. And so by then, Mojave County had retained me, and I made two or three phone calls and very quickly found out that there were settlement agreements out there, that there was legislation that was gonna be dropped, you know, imminently, and it was just, I mean, no offense, it was just very poorly handled from the get-go. No one told Mojave County until, basically, we got a letter from DWR saying, "Too bad, so sad. If you don't like it, file an appeal."
Okay. We're in the same boat, you know, with La Paz. We have no knowledge of this whatsoever. So I just wanted to know how you were notified in the first place, because I do have an email stating that La Paz did not object, and I just want to put it on the record that we didn't know we needed to, as a county.
And what?
Madam Chair, Supervisor, I think the difference or the misunderstandings coming from, we were objecting years ago to this. This settlement that we're here today on, neither Mojave or La Paz was advised of it before they drop in legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have a question on the timeline? Just as another little question here that might be relevant. Did Freeport review EDWR well records or look for the allocation of Colorado River water to determine whether Mojave County might have an interest in the negotiations? Or did Freeport just make that unilaterally?
I'm not sure I follow, Madam Chairman, what the question is. Did we review what?
Well, did you review the allocation of the Colorado River water to determine if Mojave County had, you know, we're trying to understand why we weren't called in like all the other interested parties.
And I'm not sure if this answers your question, Madam Chair, but let me try. The Phase One does not deal with allocation of Colorado River water, so I don't believe in the Phase One here that we looked at that with regard to any county or any party's participation.
Okay. And you see that as part of Phase Two?
That would, allocation of Colorado River would absolutely be part of the comprehensive Phase Two.
Okay, now that we're on, all right, so we're done with the timeline. Any other?
Just want me to look at the things they gave us. Madam Chair, maybe to clarify for me, you were talking about Indian water rights. Well, it's not coming from the sky, it's coming from the Colorado River, right?
Eventually, it will, and the water rights that would be settled for the Walupai Tribe in this, coming from the Colorado River, would be something that would be addressed in the comprehensive. What the Phase One does is it lays the groundwork for the comprehensive. If we don't get this initial phase done, then we won't be able to sit down at the table and discuss the different water rights that would be necessary for the counties, for the tribe, and for other parties along the Colorado River.
So in this paper you gave us here, it doesn't mention anything about, I thought it mentioned Colorado River water or some, the Indians' agreement. Maybe I just misunderstood.
I think if you go to Slide 10, right up at the top, it says, "This agreement does not," and it says, "Settle the claims of Walupai Tribe to the Colorado River."
It says, "Obtain," on Page 9, it says, "Obtain waivers on water rights on tribal trusts and Indian allottee lands."
Correct. That's water that they have on existing lands that do reside and that they do currently have under trust. And that's just simply saying that we're not going to object to those water rights. They have those water rights, it's not giving them new water rights. It's just saying that Freeport won't object to those water rights. Now, other parties, who are not a party to this agreement, can still object to those water rights.
So I guess maybe one of the questions the chairman might get to, or I'm sure we'll get to, is, you're coming before us today with an agreement that we actually have no idea. It's like, "Trust me later, there's gonna be two or three more phases with Colorado River allotment water involved."
I don't think there'll be, listen, I understand exactly what you're saying, that you haven't had a chance to review the agreements, that you haven't even been briefed on the agreements up until this point. And for that, we will make sure that as we move forward, we will brief you and keep you in the loop on what's going on going forward. With regard to the future negotiations, those have not even begun. Those are things that will more than likely be organized by Arizona Department of Water Resources in the future. I don't know the timeline on when they will start. Freeport will definitely be a party to those. I would envision that if Mojave and La Paz Counties have water rights issues along the Colorado, that that would potentially be a part of that conversation as well. But those will be addressed in the comprehensive. This agreement here is something that lays the groundwork for us to be able to get to that comprehensive. And let me explain a little bit what I mean by that. The comprehensive, this will be, the comprehensive will be a Indian water rights settlement, a Phase Two of this Indian water rights settlement. And in that, there will be the discussion about what Colorado River water will be potentially allocated to the Walupai Tribe. What this phase does is it allows us to get there by providing the money for the Walupai Tribe to do those infrastructure studies that I talked about previously. And those infrastructure studies will determine if they can even get water, if even if they are allocated something in the comprehensive settlement, can they even get the water there? And so that's what the Phase One does in a time-sensitive manner, to allow them to get to that comprehensive settlement. Now, I want to be clear that in this Phase One agreement, there is no allocation of Colorado River water to any of the parties involved in this. There's no lands that have been given to the Walupai Tribe or to the U.S. government. This is simply the closing out, the enabler that allows money to be transferred to the Walupai Tribe to allow them to be able to do their infrastructure studies, and also allows the time-sensitive portion of the water rights at Planet Ranch to be transferred up to the Wicke Up Well Field.
And so this hearing that's on the 9th is in the, what, Indian Affairs, and has nothing to do with water at all?
No, I'm not saying that it has nothing to do with water at all, because clearly we're transferring paper water rights from Planet Ranch up to the Wicke Up Well Field. In addition, as I mentioned earlier, there's the 694 acre-feet of Indian allotment water that will be on Freeport's part. We will waive our right to object to those, so it does involve that. And in addition, it does allow for money to be provided to the Walupai Tribe for the water studies that need to take care, that need to take place. It has been assigned to the Indian Affairs Committee within the Senate for their review, because this is viewed as the first phase in getting us to the comprehensive phase of an Indian water rights settlement.
Right. So this water that you have now, that will be negotiated with, this water that you have does absolutely nothing for Mojave County as it goes to the Baghdad Mine, now you're gonna give the water, or trade the water, to the Walupai Nation, which actually does nothing for Mojave County either. So either way, we're not involved in this. But it is our, but the water is on our land. We're under control of it.
I'm not certain what you mean by giving the water to the Walupai Tribe. We're not giving any water in this agreement whatsoever to the Walupai Tribe. We have been pumping approximately 10,055 acre-feet of water per year since the 1970s from the Wicke Up Well Field. Those water rights are not the highest priority water rights. So the intent of this is to take higher priority water rights from the Planet Ranch and place them to cover our existing water rights there at the Wicke Up Well Field. That's what's going on. We are not providing any water to any other county beyond what we've been doing in the past, given that the Baghdad Mine is also partially in Mojave and partially in the Yavapai County. But we're not, this does not transfer or give any water rights to the tribe. Now, the 694 acre-feet that I mentioned previously, all we're doing is confirming their existing rights. We're not, that's what they've had historically on those lands, and all we're saying, and they're not very high priority rights, and all we're saying in this agreement is, Freeport, as a party to this agreement, will not challenge those rights.
I guess that's hard for me to believe, since how we're having a hearing at the federal government with the Walupai Indians. If it was just something so petty as, oh, we're just gonna, Freeport's gonna sign off saying, "We're not objecting," there wouldn't be legislation. But I'll go back to the chairman, let her ask, she has questions.
Madam Chair, can I?
I want everyone to ask their questions. Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. McAllister, the 690 acre-feet of water, is that originally assigned, was that assigned to the Choy Ranch?
The 694?
The Choy Ranch?
It wasn't assigned to any ranch. These are different parcels of allotments that the Indian Tribe currently owns. We're not transferring any rights away or to those. They own these parcels of land. There's three different parcels of land that they own, and they have water rights associated with those parcels of land.
Correct, and that's what I'm trying to establish.
Okay. We're not moving those rights anywhere. This is, these are simply water rights that the tribe has, and they wanted through this settlement process for Freeport to confirm that we will not challenge those rights in the future. So it's not, that 694 acre-feet, it's not moving anywhere.
Understand that. My question to you is, what three parcels of property, can you identify those three parcels of properties and the acre-feet associated with them?
Yes, we can. Do we have that?
Yeah. I got it.
Mr. McAllister, it may be difficult for you to look that up, maybe I can go to my next question, if I could.
Absolutely.
In the Wicke Up Well Field, you currently have 40,000 acre-feet that you folks bought back in the 70s from many of the folks that lived down there in the Wicke Up area, many of which were my friends and relatives. If you're going to be establishing the use of only 10,055 on a yearly basis, what happens to the other 30,000 acre-feet that you currently have provisions for?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, the--
That's Watson, not, that's Johnson.
I'm sorry, Watson, my apologies. The other 30,000 is an entitlement on behalf of Freeport. We have the right, because they're entitled to us, to pump up to that 40,000 acre-feet. One of the things that we are very concerned about there in the Wicke Up Well Field is the balance of water. And we see that that water source is not only a long-term source for us, but also a long-term source of water for others who utilize that basin as well. So we manage that very carefully, and we watch the water levels very carefully. And one of the things that we don't want to do is put that well field not only in jeopardy for us, but also in jeopardy for the other residents and other farmers in that location. And that is why we have not pumped up to the 40,000 acre-feet. We've left it at the 10,000, approximately 10,000 acre-feet. Other parties are very interested in watching in that, and we do have, and from time to time, we've worked with other parties in that basin to make sure that they understand what we're doing there, and if there's impact on them, that we address that, and we work with them to determine what the impact is and how things can be resolved. So we do see that basin as something, or that well field, that's something that's very important, not only to us, but also to the community.
Understand that. Back to my original question. There's gonna be 30,000 acre-feet of water that you're not gonna be using. Is Freeport-McMoran gonna hold that in reserve?
No.
Are they gonna be selling those rights? What's the determination? What's gonna happen to the 30,000 acre-feet?
We, in the Phase One agreement, we have agreed that we will not use that additional 30,000 acre-feet.
Understand that.
So we will not sell it. We're not gonna give it away. That's 30,000 acre-feet that would be, continue to be a benefit to the aquifer there. And that is a commitment that we've had on our part, that we will not enter into situations where potentially somebody could come and purchase a portion of the land in the Wicke Up Well Field and start pumping 30,000 acre-feet. Under the agreement that we have, we have basically determined that we will not use that 30,000 acre-feet of entitlements.
And you've hit the nail right on the head, my concern. Would you be willing to enter into an agreement with Mojave County that would alert us to the fact that if there is a possibility of the sale of those 30,000 acre-feet of water, that you would notify Mojave County of that fact?
That I do not see as a problem.
Okay, we have a real concern, because that 30,000 acre-feet is a huge amount of water and will impact the development of that entire valley. And I understand that you appreciate that resource as well as we do. I just want to make sure that we're in the loop of information if Freeport-McMoran changes their mind down the road at some point in time.
I guess, yeah.
We want to be right in the middle of that playing field.
Supervisor Watson, we agree with you. As part of the protections, the agreements address this. It doesn't specifically address it with regard to Mojave County, but it does address that there is a, if we ever do decide to sell that land, there is a very, there's already, we're going to place restrictions on that land, on the title, and so there's already going to be a pretty significant communication process that's going to be, going to be put in place, and we will make sure that Mojave County is included in that.
Thank you very much.
Can I go back to your, my apologies, can I go back to your prior question on the 694?
Yeah.
So in the agreement, the, there's 82, it's located in different parcels, there's three different parcels. The first parcel has 82 acre-feet per year allocated to it. The second parcel has 312 acre-feet per year. The second parcel has 312 acre-feet per year. And the third parcel has 300 acre-feet per year for a combined total of 694. These all reside in Mojave County and they are to the south of our Baghdad operation. And Supervisor Watson, we can provide you a map that is an exhibit to the agreement that will specifically delineate these properties for you.
Okay, thank you. They're south of the current wellfield, is that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was just corrected. I got my north and south mixed up. It's north of the existing wellfield.
North, okay, that's what I thought. There was some Indian property that was to the north of your wellfield. Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chair? Oh, go ahead.
Okay, one second. We have a few people who want to speak and Supervisor Clapperton, right after.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to ask a follow-up question on Supervisor Watson's question about the 30,000 acre-feet of water. And I'm a little bit confused because in Arizona, as far as I know, there are groundwater and surface water, and surface water is allocated, but groundwater is not allocated. And in the WikiUp wellfield, I think they're pumping groundwater, which is not allocated at all, and so they don't have outright rights to this water. And so I don't understand where this 30,000 acre-feet comes from. It's right now in WikiUp, they're pumping only groundwater, which is, you can pump as much as you want for beneficial use. So my question is, where is this 30,000 acre-feet of savings coming from actually? I don't understand it. Could you answer that, please?
The total 40,000 acre-feet of water rights, that there are actually diversion rights from surface water, they're not actually groundwater rights.
They're actually allocated water rights.
They are, that's correct.
They were diversion from stream rights, is that correct?
Is that the correct terminology? Yes.
I recall that down on the Benegas Ranch, that was pretty much, those rights were diversion rights.
Yep, they're all nodding back there, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's have Supervisor Clapperton then.
Good morning. My name is King Clapperton. I'm La Paz County District 2 Supervisor. Speaking from the standpoint and the mindset of La Paz County taxpayers, especially in my district, it appears to me, as I see, that La Paz County has about 20, 25% of that Planet Ranch and Lincoln Ranch area along there. That's our side of the border there from Mojave County. I've been, I've lived in La Paz County since 1985 and I spent 20 years as a deputy sheriff there and I traveled all over the county, including the old Planet Ranch Road that led from State Route 95 inland to Planet Ranch itself. The road, the current road has been washed out numerous times by the flooding from Alamo Lake. There is no more open roadway from State Route 95 to Planet Ranch Road. It's closed 3.3 miles in. It's been posted by what I consider to be an illegal gate by the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. You mentioned, sir, the, you're going to irrigate Planet Ranch. And my question would be, for what reason? And if there is a harvest that ensues, how will it ever leave Planet Ranch? It will have to come through La Paz County. And the, the whole issue here with water rights in La Paz County has been, has been in question for many, many, many years, both in my district and in District 3, which is Supervisor Irwin's district, from the Salome-Wenon area down into, down into south, our southern border with Maricopa and Yuma. It seems that currently in my district, the Salt River Project, a quasi-governmental organization, has joined in to capture water. Water is human life and animal life and plant life. It's everything to us out here in the rural areas. It seems to be an ongoing trend that big cities and big businesses are coming into our rural areas and draining our water, taking our water rights or whatever, however they're acquiring these for their own particular benefits at the cost to local residents of the rural areas. I guess my main question here is, just simply, what are you going to grow out at Planet Ranch? And how are you going to get it out of there once it's grown? And I think we'll just leave it at that. The rest of it, I'm going to have, I'll come up with questions later on. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, and my apologies, what was your name?
Clapperton.
Thank you, Supervisor Clapperton. The intent right now with regard to the farming of the lands is we will irrigate the lands with grass and then we will run cattle on the lands and the cattle would actually be the product that would be moved in and out of the Planet Ranch. And that would be what would go towards the consumptive use of the water. There are roads, as you mentioned, that do go down south into La Paz County, but there are also roads to the north where they have not been washed out and we will be able to bring the equipment in from the north.
Sir, have you traveled that road yourself from the north?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay, sir, thank you very much.
I just wondered when you used, last irrigated with that 40,000 acre-feet?
When we last utilized the full 40,000 acre-feet? We currently rotate the 40,000 acre-feet in our existing 10,000 allotment, or 10,000 actual use that we have. So on an annual basis, we're using the different 40,000 acre-feet of rights.
None of that stuff's ever been adjudicated.
This basin has not been adjudicated.
Right. So you really don't know what you've got.
That would be correct.
Right, just like everybody else up there.
That's absolutely correct.
And if those are dual-filled, meaning that it could be groundwater, then, I mean, I understand what you're trying to do. What, how, do you know the acreage of the Walupai tracks? The three tracks that the Walupai Tribe owns?
The three tracks that we're talking about?
Yeah.
Do we have the actual acreage?
We don't have the acreage.
Once again, Carlos, we can provide that in the maps that we offered to Supervisor Watson previously.
Yeah, I mean, we're all playing with half a deck because we don't have exhibits. I mean, we just got the agreements. And I'm going to correct you, there are two tracks in there that we don't have acreage for, the Benegas Ranch piece and the right of first refusal piece, both of which could go into tribal hands, right?
That's correct, if they ever exercise the right of first refusal.
Right. And then what precludes those tracks from being taken into trust?
Right now, this was a topic of conversation and we know that as a part of the comprehensive settlement or the Phase 2, there will be a debate and that it will address future lands taken into trust in the comprehensive settlement.
But there's nothing today that restricts the tribe from taking its properties into trust today.
That's correct.
So if this agreement becomes effective and they acquire both of those other tracks, those lands could be taken into trust today?
Yeah.
Or after acquisition.
Hypothetically, that could be correct, but, you know, Mr. Ronstadt, I think at this point, those lands are also, you know, things that we're not looking at selling and we will not, we will most likely not put them out for any type of a sale process prior to a comprehensive agreement. So, you know, the right of first refusal that we've given them will more than likely not be exercised by that time.
And then, well, let's talk about the comprehensive agreement because my understanding is that the caption of the agreement was changed from the Phase 1 agreement to the Big Sandy Planet Ranch Agreement, simply to disavow people from believing that there might be a subsequent phase.
Let me change the wording, if you will, a little bit on that. It wasn't to necessarily disavow people that there might be one. It was actually to disavow people that there is a guarantee of one. And there was a bit of a concern from certain parties that said, if you label this Phase 1 and have a legislative process that is completed, that it mandates that there must be a Phase 2. Now, a lot of the parties, if not all of the parties that are going to be at the table in the Phase 2, they all have a very concerted effort and, you know, they all want to get this done, but there was a concern that if the legislation went through addressing a Phase 1, that it would automatically preclude that a Phase 2 would have to happen.
But there's no guarantee and it could take 20 years.
Correct.
Just like Navajo Hopi and the Hila's and everybody else.
It would be subject to the same timeline that most other Indian water rights settlements are on, which your right take a lot of time.
Or a lack of a timeline.
Or a lack of a timeline. That's a probably better way to say it.
And in the interim, I mean, you could be gone, Freeport could decide to sell those two tracks to the tribe and they could be taken into trust.
That's correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson.
Part of it was covered by Mr. Ronstadt on the allotment of water in WikiUp. I don't believe there is an allotment. I believe you can pump as much water as you want to pump and that's one of the problems we've had over the years until this meeting is the first time that Freeport has ever publicly stated that they're taking, or going to take, 10,555 acre-foot of water. I have asked them, Arizona Department of Water Resources, asked Freeport, and they have refused to give us any information on how much water they were pumping. And as you know, when you turn the pumps on, the lights dim in WikiUp. That's how much water goes out of there. Are you willing to give us some kind of documentation to the amount of water that you're pulling instead of just, you know, I'm not doubting your word, obviously, but, you know, we need something more than just the fact that you're saying it's 10,555 acre-foot. How do we check that?
Supervisor Johnson, we do have the data. The data does go back, I believe, for about 15 years when we started monitoring how much water we were pulling from that wellfield. And we could provide that to you and you will see that it hasn't ever exceeded the 1055.
Okay, so in the time you've been there, you've taken, what, 400, 500,000 acre-foot of water out?
I don't know exactly how much over the course of time. The one comment that I would like to address at this point, and we've heard it on several occasions, and I'm not sure if it's just kind of an analogy or if it's actually that there's a true perception, but we run those wells 24/7. And so when we hear this notion that the lights dim when we turn them on, they're running all the time. So I'm not exactly certain how that perception has come about, but those wells are not turned on and off. We run them, you know, at some point, they might be running at a capacity lower, but we run those wells 24/7.
Now, you're taking, I guess where the problem's coming in for us is you're taking, are you going to take the 5,500, how much water rights are you going to take and transfer to the WikiUp field to pull water?
From Planet Ranch. The breakdown from Planet Ranch is about 8,000, about 8,500 will be coming from Planet Ranch and the remainder will be coming from Lincoln Ranch.
Okay, so those problems that we're having is you have groundwater that you're taking now, whether you have, you know, obviously, we dispute the grandfathering of pumping it over, but, so you're taking the 8,000 acre-foot out of Planet Ranch, which is allotted, and transferring it to another, which takes it once again out of our economic ability to, you know, promote our county. I guess that's part of the problem because it's safe for just argument, you had 40,000 acre-foot, now you're transferring another 8,000 acre-foot, that's 48,000 acre-foot and you're claiming you're only taking 11,000 acre-foot. That's, Supervisor Watson said, that doesn't leave us any water to, you know, get other businesses going, whether it be farming or anything else. I guess that's one of our problems. And if I could ask Supervisor Clapperton, you were deputy sheriff in La Paz, sir? And during that time, you were there for a long time, were you always able until recently to drive out to the Planet Ranch area as everybody else was? I mean, it's just been basically put off limits by the fishing game and people recently. Before, when it was in the Planet Ranch, everybody went out there, people hunted and fished and, right? So when people are talking about, oh, we're going to make sure you have access, the agreement that I saw, and people could tell me, just says, well, if Fish and Game wants to let you, Fish and Game has always said, especially US Fish and Game, they want to block all access to Planet Ranch. And when you look at the land that, on your map that you're giving, that's pretty much all the land that people would want to go to. Do you agree with that or I don't?
The access to Planet Ranch was, had at least two from the La Paz County side, one off of Highway 95 a number of years ago, in the late 80s and early 90s. And in the early 90s is when the initial flood came through and wiped out the road to Planet Ranch. So the alternative was either come through mineral wash or from a four corners area and access the gate from that end, from the eastern end of the wildlife, wildlife area. And we were able to go inside Planet Ranch. There used to be hay trucks and by the hundreds coming and going out of Planet Ranch to Highway 95. Then the city of Scottsdale took it over and the story continues.
Now, with you being down in La Paz and all of us actually driving through La Paz County and you probably driving through Mojave County, would you say that Planet Ranch might be one of the most beautiful places, I guess, in the two counties or in the state to be giving up to no access?
That entire, that entire region from north of Alamo Lake, northeast of Alamo Lake, from the La Paz County border all the way through to Lake Havasu is one of the most beautiful areas. When you're down in there, you don't even realize you're in Arizona. It just seems like a beautiful tropical area. But the, the main push seems to be from the federal government and primarily US Fish and Wildlife and the Environmental Protection Agency to provide habitat for various alleged endangered species and to keep human beings out. Human beings fall way, way down on the priority list there. So we're suffering down in that area from many different angles. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, you said that you'd worked with other water users in WikiUp area. Which water users have you worked with to do conservation?
I don't want to say it was to do conservation. The water users, I think, was just on a one-off basis when people have contacted us and said, hey, they've got a problem with their well or it's gone dry. Have you guys been the effect on this? And we have gone and we've worked with them to determine what the effect was on their well.
Okay, so it was more just complaints that you were?
That's correct. That would be correct.
That's all, Madam Chair.
Just back to the access. So what would this access take form of? How would this access be guaranteed?
The legislation currently has wording in it that says that access will not, will be governed by existing state and federal laws, but will not be restricted. And so that's something that probably would be a better question for Game and Fish, once they take ownership or even before they take ownership, if you, if you wanted to ask that question of them. You know, that's something that's going to fall within their purview to manage.
Is there anyone from Arizona Game and Fish here? I invited them. I guess not.
I think, Madam Chair, it's like everything else, we have, when we try to get, you know, go onto the land, if they restrict our access, much like the travel management programs and those things, they're not going to be able to guarantee us access. And I think with the lower Colorado multi-species, they have no intention of letting us into that land.
And I can't, Supervisor Johnson, my apologies, I can't comment on that. I would, my own personal opinion, I could give you that, is, you know, I want free access to the land as well and, you know, it would be great if somehow we could talk with Game and Fish and find out what their views are on that.
So it's not, it's not going to be open? Yeah, you said in the agreement.
The agreement puts in there, and do we have, do we have the legislation wording?
I think, Madam Chair, it says in there that it'll be under their auspices to do as they see fit, you know, I mean, they can give access, don't have to give access, it's up to them and the way it was written.
But we're being told that that is what we got as Mojave County, we're getting access. So I just want to hear it from Freeport that...
So let me read, in the legislation, there's a clause in here that says, "Public access. Nothing in this act prohibits reasonable public access to Planet and/or Lincoln Ranch in a matter that is consistent with all applicable federal, state laws and any applicable conservation management plan implemented under the conservation program."
Wow, that's vague. So I guess, I guess you're right. Yeah, it said nothing. Yeah, because that's what was told to me, that that is, you know, the little bone that was thrown to Mojave County, that we were gonna get that access. But judging from what I just heard, I wouldn't take that as meaning that, honestly. Because we all know, we've all worked with those agencies. Supervisor Clapperton?
Thank you. Just one quick, one quick input here is that, is that we need to be careful on whether we're saying US Fish and Wildlife or Arizona Game and Fish. Two separate agencies, one federal, one state. So we need to clarify when we speak and use the acronyms because if we're wrong on an acronym, we could end up misunderstanding it all. Thank you.
As far as I've heard, it's just been Arizona Game and Fish, right?
That is correct. It is Arizona Game and Fish that will ultimately be managing this property. That's correct.
I guess, Madam Chair, the confusion would be that Lower Colorado River Multi-Species is kind of, US Fish and Game is all over that and they're the ones that wield the big stick.
I thought that was Arizona Game and Fish.
Yeah, that's the problem.
We don't know.
US Fish and Wildlife versus Arizona Game and Fish.
We have to find that out.
That's, that's what I'm gonna find out.
Madam Chairman, I had a couple questions. And also, we're having a little difficulty on getting Mr. Ronstadt. He's been waving over there and had some comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's all right, if I could, there's two agreements that actually have to be read in tandem or, one is the Big Sandy, Planet Ranch Agreement, correct?
Correct.
And the other one is the Walupi Bill Williams Agreement?
Correct.
And there were some statements that were made in your presentation that said that there was an unclassified, undisclosed amount of money that was gonna be given to the tribe, but it was confidential.
Yes.
Is that in addition to the million dollars that's gonna be provided to the tribe? So they're gonna get a million from Freeport and then an undisclosed additional amount? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Also, in reading both the Big Sandy and the Planet Ranch Agreement, I see that, you know, the Planet Ranch Agreement is, doesn't really lead you to understand what the entire picture is. And the Walupi Agreement helps a little bit. And I thought the Walupi Agreement talked about parcels of land going to the Walupi Tribe. And you made the statement that there was no land going to the Walupi Tribe and that, maybe I read it wrong. So I just wanted to state that I have to verify my facts on that issue. But with that said, you also said that there was no water that was being contemplated with that agreement. However, in the Walupi Bill Williams Agreement, it does state that the monies that will be provided to the tribe are going towards perfecting their claim to Colorado River rights. Now, in me trying to find out what that actually was, I couldn't find out what, I couldn't on my own determine what the Walupis Tribe, Walupi Tribe's claim to the Colorado River water was. Could you clarify that?
Unfortunately, I can't. They do have a claim to the Colorado River water under the Arizona Settlements Act?
No, they have a separate claim.
They have a separate claim? Okay, they do have a separate claim that they have filed. Now, that claim has not been agreed by anyone at this point. And that's what would happen in the comprehensive, is to determine whether or not there is an allocation that would go to them.
And Mr. McAllister, to me, it's a stretch to say there's no water involved when actually Freeport's paying a million dollars to the tribe to perfect those water rights. And just the same as it is to, a stretch in my mind at least, to claim that, you know, claim access benefits when you say the agreement in no way limits access. Well, it probably in no way prohibits the limiting of access either. So that's somewhat disingenuous. But anyway, I yield to Mr. Ronstadt.
Well, my Kendricks kind of asked what I wanted to ask, and that's about the million dollars. I mean, basically, they can use that for anything, as long as it's geared towards acquisition of Colorado River water, which means litigation. Is there any constraint on the tribe for taking your money and using it to sue us all?
Madam Chair, Mr. Ronstadt, the money is actually allocated for a very specific use. The money is actually being allocated for them to complete their studies, their infrastructure studies, to actually, if they do get an allocation, how they would actually get the water to wherever they needed to bring the water.
And where's that limitation? Because I didn't see it in the agreement.
It's in the Walupi Agreement. Do we have that? I have your copy, okay? Can I have you find that?
I think the limitation was agricultural residential and they could actually put it in a reservoir, which I don't know what that means, if it's a dam or a tank, so.
Where is that? Because I don't remember it in here.
I get it. I remember reading it too.
They're looking right now.
The other thing, it just highlights, I need those exhibits. I mean, they need these exhibits. Because when we sit here and spar back and forth, I mean, we're playing with half a deck, just like we have been since June 4th. We got that letter.
And to cut to the chase on that, are, is it contemplated to give none, part, some, or most of, and this is a stretch, the Benegas Ranch? I have no idea. It surfaced in the agreement?
Yeah.
Was that, what's the relationship with Benegas Ranch to the agreement?
That surfaced under the right of, the right of first refusal.
The whole ranch?
Yeah, the ranch is under the right of first refusal. The, in Section 9.1 of the agreement, it says, "Within 10 business days after Freeport and the tribe have exceeded both the agreement, have executed both the agreement and the Walupi BWR Agreement, Freeport shall transfer a million dollars to the tribe as a contribution toward the cost of the tribe's study of water projects alternatives." And that's the infrastructure study that I was referring to.
So, so hold on there a minute. So which?
This is, this is in the, it's in the Big Sandy Agreement.
Okay. Okay, and it was 9.1?
9.1, yes.
And just so the chairman knows, it surfaces in the Walupi Agreement that states that it talks about perfecting the water rights for the Colorado River, that the tribe's claim to the Colorado River.
Right, so there's, to me, there's a contradiction there between what the legislation authorizes and what the agreement states.
Well, there isn't, Mr. Ronstadt, the, we're talking about two different contributions here. Talking about the million dollars for the contribution for the water studies, and then we're talking about the Economic Development Fund. The Economic Development Fund does actually allocate money for the Walupi Tribe to potentially go out, or not to potentially, it allocates money for them to go and purchase water rights along the Colorado River. Now, it does not permit them to transfer those rights over to, for any type of use by the Walupi Tribe on the reservation until the comprehensive agreement is complete. So there's two separate, you know, the two separate bags of money or, not bags, but two separate buckets. One is for the infrastructure studies and the other one, which is the undisclosed amount for them to purchase water that they would then be able to use subsequent to a comprehensive settlement.
Okay, but there's a difference between purchase and acquire, and acquire can include litigation. So what I want to know is can they take the million dollars, sue somebody on the river under their federal claim and use that under the guise of acquiring water?
The million dollars, once again, is for the study of water projects alternatives. The other fund is also very specific, Mr. Ronstadt, in that it is only to be used for purchasing land that has water rights associated with it.
But that's the one that's confidential?
Yes.
So we don't know whether that, we don't know where those lands might be or whether they're restricted to property along the river or other land in the Big Sandy or, I mean, it's just out there.
Madam Chair, Mr. Ronstadt, that would be correct. We don't, we don't know. I don't even believe they've identified lands at this time.
So how are you gonna get me the exhibits? That's what I want to know.
The exhibits are still being completed at this time and we can get those out to you when they're in a completed form.
You know, offhand, the acreage of that right of first refusal tract?
We can, we can find that out, but we don't have that off the top of my head right now.
I'd like to know the acreages of all these tracts. If they've got parcel numbers, I'd like to know that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we have, we have seven days till a federal hearing and your settlement agreements aren't done yet. How are they writing legislation if they don't know what the settlement is?
The settlement agreements are done and they're done in form. There is some final touches that are going on right now to some of the exhibits, not, the vast majority of them are complete, but there's some minor things that are being done where the legislation can be run at the same time.
Just so I'm clear, our delegation has pushed through bills in the Senate and the House, and they don't even know what the settlements are, the final settlements.
Now, the final settlements are done. There's just some wordsmithing on one or two final exhibits that still need to be complete. They're not material matters that are gonna change the legislation in any form.
If they weren't material matters, how come we don't have copies of them?
Well, it's hard to have different drafts of agreements out there rotating around and people not talking, people talking about different drafts. And we just want to make sure that the version of the conversation is the final version.
I guess I understand your point of view from Freeport and I want to do it, but I guess for the board, our legislature doesn't feel that we can look at any kind of settlement agreements before they vote on legislation. That really bothers me.
Well, they did that with Obamacare. You have to read the bill, you have to pass the bill to know what's in it. We know how that worked out.
I have a question for Mr. McAllister. Mr. McAllister, do you know the relationship of the Choya Ranch that's owned by the Walupi Tribe and the Benegas Ranch? Do they abut each other?
Yes, they do.
Do you recall how many acres the Benegas Ranch?
I think we just had that question, Supervisor, from Mr. Ronstadt, and we'll get that number to you.
Okay. You know, if I was sitting in the chair of the Walupi Tribe, that would be certainly a grab that I would want to make, would be the Benegas Ranch adjoining the Choya Ranch in some of the most pristine areas of Mojave County. And with current investments in Walupi, or not in Walupi, but in Indian Gaming, that would make one fantastic resort. So I guess I've got a great deal of concern in the fact that McMoran has even got that on the table as first right of refusal. Just a comment.
Do you have anything else?
I think we ought to go into executive session, but I, I mean, you gotta ask your attorney about that.
Are you done asking questions, Madam Chair?
Well, do you have anything you want to ask?
Yes, I do have a few questions for Mr. McAllister. Would Freeport support the imposition of a pump tax on the transportation of water from the Big Sandy to its Baghdad operations to kind of offset the revenue from the loss of property taxes?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Bishop, we'd have to discuss that before we would, I'd be able to respond to that.
Okay, would Freeport then agree to a severance and transfer of the Big Sandy water rights to Mojave County once the Freeport cases cease operations at Baghdad? And do you have an estimate of what that time would be?
The, Madam Chair, Supervisor Bishop, the mine life right now is estimated at 57 years based upon the resource that we have, we've drilled out. But the indication is, is that we'll probably be mining there for about 100 years. Now, what happens at the end of that? I understand your question. It's not something that we have contemplated at this point. And once again, it would be something that we would need to sit down as a company and determine if that's something that we could consider.
Okay, and then finally, would Freeport support amendment of the settlement legislation to provide for the transfer of BLM property to Mojave County for industrial park development? Public parks or other public uses?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Bishop, once again, that's something that we were not familiar with, but we can sit down and talk and figure out what your, what the lands are that you're talking about there. It might be hard this late in the game because it's not something that is associated with the rest of the agreement, but I'm not certain how to answer that question without knowing a little bit more of the situation.
Okay, but you will take these questions?
They're writing them down.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, so anybody have any other questions?
Madam Chair, yes, please. You said that you now own, obviously, the Lincoln Ranch?
Yes, sir.
Who are the principals you bought that from? You know?
I don't, sorry, Madam Chair and Supervisor Johnson, I don't know who we bought that from. I don't know how long ago it was, but we can get you an answer for that.
All right, thank you. And just so everybody understands, Mojave County, the Board of Supervisors has written letters supporting, like the Rosemont Mine and those sorts of businesses that go on. We're just a little upset that Mojave County and La Paz are at the center of this. We're talking about the Walupi Indians getting a million dollars. The taxpayers of Mojave and La Paz seem to be just getting screwed on this entire deal. Another thing that comes to mind is we have tried in the past to assist other people who have water rights to bring the water rights through Planet Ranch and the land that now US Fish and Wildlife, Arizona Game and Fish, the Lower Colorado Multi-Species has to use that water for the benefit of Lake Havasu, Bullhead City. And we've been stopped by the regulations and roadblocks are put in our, in our way. I guess, would Freeport be willing to say that they would assist us in getting other water rights that have been perfected in that area so that we can use them? Because without water rights, Mojave and La Paz are gonna dry up.
Hi, Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, we, Freeport recognizes that we're also a citizen in this community and we would be willing to sit down and work with you in any way we can and help you out to the best that we can.
I guess for the time being, that'll be all, Madam Chair.
Anything else before we go into executive session?
I just, I have to say one thing. We've talked about some legal concepts like forfeiture and abandonment on Planet Ranch. I'm not getting into any of that just because I don't think this is the appropriate forum. But our silence, my client's silence, doesn't necessarily mean that we agree with you. That's all I want to say.
One more, Madam Chair, I guess, because we talked about further agreements. Originally, when this was being discussed, years ago, I've been involved in this, is my understanding that Freeport has to have a settlement, or I don't say has a settlement, but land was disturbed where it needed to be an offset, where pristine land was given to the federal government to offset mining that was done in some other state. Is that no longer on the table, where land will be traded? You know, where you had a mining operation in another state, I believe it was New Mexico, where part of your settlement to close the mine up or whatever was that you would give them some other land, the federal government? And that's what I heard Planet Ranch was gonna be used for.
One moment. Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, in New Mexico, we did enter into some natural resource damage settlements, but it was determined during those settlements that the, that the land that was used to offset those damage had to be closer to the actual... mine site. And so there may have been some contemplation in the past about utilizing Planet Ranch lands for those, but it's no longer part of that package.
Okay. So to the best of your knowledge, no, if there are subsequent settlements, Planet Ranch land will be used in mitigation?
At this point, I'm only involved with this one transaction. If, if you're asking is, you know, what is Freeport contemplating for the use of the remaining portions of Planet Ranch? Right now, we're trying to get through this deal and, and then we'll figure out what we need to do on, on the remainder of Planet Ranch. You know, I, I will tell you Supervisor Johnson, that, that we probably are not long-term holders of that land.
Would you like to say something?
Madam Chair, Supervisors, my name is Matthew Kapalby. I represent the Walupi Tribal Council. I'd like just to make a quick point to Mr. Ronstadt's concern regarding the use of the funds that are being provided by Freeport for the studies and for the economic development purposes. The intent of the council at this time is to apply those funds to the further development and infrastructure use at Grand Canyon West, which is a very important economic engine for Northwest Arizona. And the purpose is to provide further housing and additional infrastructure for expanded development at that location. That is the intent and, and also the purpose of the water allocation to, to be provided out at that location currently, which is very constrained in its current water use. But once that water is provided at that location, that, that area will be able to expand considerably. And, and that is one of the major goals for the Walupi Tribe as well as for the overall business community here in Mojave County. So, thank you.
Do you have anything to add to that? Question? Okay. Thank you very much. And we're going to go into executive session right now. Shouldn't be too long.
Madam Chairman, let's, let's make a motion.
Okay. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Aye. Pose. (applause)
I represent the Walupi Tribal Council. I'd like just to make a quick point to Mr. Ronstadt's concern regarding the use of the funds that are being provided by Freedport for the studies and for the economic development purposes. The intent of the council at this time is to apply those funds to the further development and infrastructure use at Grand Canyon West, which is a very important economic engine for Northwest Arizona. And the purpose is to provide further housing and additional infrastructure for expanded development at that location. That is the intent and also the purpose of the water allocation, to, to be provided out at that location currently, which is very constrained in its current water use. But once that water is provided at that location, that, that area will be able to expand considerably. And, and that is one of the major goals for the Walupi Tribe, as well as for the overall business community here in Mojave County. So, thank you.
Do you have anything to add to that? Question? Okay, thank you very much. And we're going to go into executive session right now. It shouldn't be too long.
Madam Chairman, let's make a motion.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
Do you think they're uncomfortable?
Put it up and down.
Oh, God, again, please.
Okay, back from executive session, and we're on our number one. This discussion, possible action, the severance and transfer of certain water rights, a portment to land located within Planet Ranch, legislation-related agreements or documents unauthorized the board to take steps deemed to be in Mojave County's best interest. Anybody want to say anything?
Madam Chair, if I may, I believe water is our most precious natural resource. And the federal government, through legisla-, through legislations, is intending to take it away, along with our private land and our ability to grow our economy. All of this was done without consulting the taxpayers or their elected representatives in the two counties, Mojave and La Paz, who are to be affected. Our counties are being forced to give up resources for a settlement that we know absolutely nothing about. And we're being used as a pawn, hopefully not, but in an Indian water settlement. This is another example of big business trampling a little guy. Big business went to DC, wrote draft legislation, and has our delegation doing their bidding. And if anybody has any idea about who the small guy is, I believe Freedport is about a $44 billion company. La Paz has a general fund of about $12.3 million, and we have a general fund of about $43.7 million. That's all, Madam Chair.
So, no action taken on number one. Off to number two, discussion, possible action regarding submitting a letter in opposition to S2503 regarding the Big Sandy River Planet Ranch Water Rights Settlement Agreement scheduled for July 9, 2014.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion on that, if I could. We have no settlements in front of it, no real information, and I think without the settlements or any other information, we have no choice but to direct our attorney in working with the chairwoman. And...